I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my name, under God, in the name of the justice of all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have a couple of appointments. Right now, we have Chief Yetman and Chief Patterson here for an appointment within the Fire Department.
As you probably know, we had a vacancy, a dispatcher vacancy. We had one of our civilian dispatchers took a job as a firefighter, paramedic in another town. So, we advertised the position, got a bunch of resumes, looked them over. We interviewed two people. The person I'm putting forward for your approval is Thomas Cardwell. Tom is a Burlington resident, graduated Burlington High School in 2008. He has an associate's from Middlesex College. He has a bachelor's from Salem State College, and he's currently enrolled in the paramedic program at Northern Essex Community College. Currently works as acting ambulance. He's been an EMT basic supervisor. So, I'm looking for your approval for Thomas Cardwell to become a dispatcher.
Any questions from the board on that?
Anybody have any questions? So, we'll wait.
Thank you. With the chief's recommendation, I hereby appoint Thomas Cardwell to the position of civilian dispatcher in the Burlington Fire Department and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Disdain? Against? Five zero zero. Congratulations. He's right in. He's easy. Congratulations. Welcome, Tom. Congratulations, buddy. Welcome along. Let's see.
Guys want to take a picture?
I see his mom and his grandmother in the back. Do you want to come up and take pictures?
Sure.
Absolutely. Thomas probably doesn't, but he can deal with it. Come on, Thomas, come up, take a picture in the front here with the chief. Your grandmother want to come? Come on, it's okay.
All right. Ready?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thomas, you do know there's a lot of things we could say, right?
Only your hairdresser knows for sure.
Could be.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have John Sanchez here for promotion within the Buildings and Cemeteries Department, Division of DPW. Thank you to all the DPW folks who came to show support for the appointment. You guys always show up with good numbers for these things, so we really appreciate that. John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, tonight, I'm recommending Frank Anderson for the position of Buildings and Cemeteries Superintendent. I think we'll all agree that the circumstances, I think all of us would have preferred for them to be different. The former Superintendent Rich Reed, we're really going to miss him, very good friend, very good employee with the town, and, you know, unfortunately, we all know that he passed away recently. But we have to continue to work, and in doing so, we did post a position internally. We had four candidates within the department. We interviewed all of them. Mr. Hayes, Town Engineer, and I actually went through the interview process, and after consideration of the qualifications and experience, I'm actually very happy to recommend Frank Anderson for that position. He's been with the town since 2000. He possesses all the licenses that we need for this particular job, and over the years, he has accumulated a lot of experience, particularly related to the buildings maintenance, which, as you all know, we took over about five years ago in the DPW department. So, I'm also happy to see a lot of members of our current department, not just the Buildings and Cemeteries, but actually many of the other departments, Highway, Water, and also a future member of our department, Durant Junior. Who joined us tonight. But with that, I do recommend Frank for that position.
Any questions from the board on that?
There might be some comments about, you know, it's already laughing down there. I'll be nice. They said something about the haircut, I don't know. I don't know. That's all I heard. The mullet's got to go or something. I heard that earlier, but...
And with John's recommendation, hereby appoint Frank Anderson to the position of Superintendent of Buildings and Cemeteries in the Burlington Public Works Department and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard fifteen day waiting period.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Obsteing. Five zero zero in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, Frank. Congratulations, brother. Don't hit me, don't hit me.
John, you want to take a picture?
You want to take a picture with John?
Frank.
All right, no pictures for Frank, I guess. Next up, we have John Sanchez going to update the board on concrete sidewalks. John?
So, I have actually a couple of pictures. We have the same pictures, just not floating. So, you can actually have a quick look at it.
That will play it up quick.
in town. Prior to that, we also have done quite a few, but we noticed that starting in 16, the sidewalks have been failing. And if you notice from the pictures, we have some spalling going on in the sidewalks, and we had had many contractors working using concrete mixes from different places, and they tend to be failing in the same manner. Now, we do not understand at this point why this is failing. It's not a local problem. This is throughout Massachusetts. We've talked to our colleagues in different towns and even the state, and they have been having the same problem. We think that it could be the mix, it could be workmanship. At this point, we don't really know what may be causing this problem. So, in Burlington, because contractors have to guarantee they work with us, we made the contractors come back and replace the panels that have this problem. But we have had problems in Bedford Street, here in Town Hall, Police Department, you name it. Just about every street that we've done, we have problems with the quality of the product. This year alone, we have over a hundred panels that we have in the contractors remove and replace, at no cost to the town, I have to say. So, we thought that until people smarter than us figure out what is going on with the concrete and the mix, that we should probably wait on our future work that we were planning and doing. Now, we have nothing currently in the works for this year. In 2020, we only had a small project on Terrace Hall that it was going to be concrete. Everything else that we had programmed is actually by Tuminos asphalt, which is not going to have a problem. But we wanted to update you what is going on and to pretty much ask for or recommend that we like wait until we figure out what is happening before we actually do additional work. Like I said, we have small work happening right now, but nothing as major as like the recent Bedford Street extension, which it was done last year, and it's already had areas that are failing. That's one of the older section of Bedford Street. So, we thought it was prudent to just maybe wait a little bit until we reengage ourselves into doing this type of work. It doesn't help a residents that we go and do a project and we disturb the road in the sidewalk, and then we go back a year or two later and go on and do it again. If you remember Bedford Street, we did a long portion of it last year, and even some of the newer work that we did is failing again. So, we wanted to recommend that to the board, since you're the robe of commissioners, to perhaps, you know, wait on the next projects until a solution is found to this issue. Now, we expect the concrete for that type of work. It's a special concrete that we use with air entrainment or a certain percentage, and that helps preserve the concrete. But for whatever reason, it's only the newer one that is creating this problem. If you look at the older concrete, even the sidewalks here in Town Hall that is much older, they're perfectly fine. It's only this newer concrete that is being installed in the last two or three years. So, I'm going to show the pictures. You have any questions?
So, just a quick question for me before the guy speak. Just to update this, a panel is the two, the one piece of cement where you see the lines of it.
That's correct, yes.
Just so that everyone understands, it's, we're not putting out panels, this is, that's what they call.
Right.
Secondly, this says, update on it, so does this mean, are you looking for a vote from us to nod this or...
At this point, since we don't have any work scheduled for this year, so we actually don't need to take any action.
Okay.
Tonight, so it was more like bringing you up to speed on what is going on, but perhaps in the future, if we still don't have an answer for 2020, at that point, we may just ask you to maybe take an official vote in which we're going to wait on that type of work.
Okay.
But for now, there's no need to, like I said, because we don't really have anything scheduled, but I wanted, we wanted to bring it up so you know when we are with it. We know that we have a sidewalk committee as well, and I think that it will be prudent for us to let them know what is going on and why perhaps in the future, we're going to wait until we see what happens to this.
I'll...
But it's definitely, definitely an issue, like I said, not just with us, but in all the, seems all of Massachusetts.
It's kind of like Bedford Street last year, so we just want to say thank you for myself and the board. I'm sure that, you know, your team of guys that's out there looking at this kind of stuff, and we had to do Bedford Street over last year, the contractor came back and did it at no cost to us. These sidewalks at no cost to us. So, this is, this is a big plus for the town and your department to say, these guys are on top of things, they're watching it.
Thank you.
I'm going to stop now. I'll start over here. You guys, any comments from anybody? Paul, go ahead.
Sure. I'm just looking at these Johns, and this is from a layperson's point of view. I'm not an expert, and I'm just asking the question. Out here, you know, on Center Street, vehicles aren't rolling up onto the sidewalk and causing there to be pressure points or anything, but I'm looking at where some of the lines are here close to the street, like vehicles, delivery vehicles, whatever, roll up onto the sidewalk. Could something like that have been happening before it really had a chance to settle and seal itself or any of those things?
Yeah, we don't, we don't see the, we call this spalling as opposed to structural cracking. So, we see this more of either workmanship or what we call air entrainment or the concrete itself. So, if you work the concrete too much while it's still fresh, and you add too much water to it, and you bring the water to the surface, what you're doing sometimes is making that concrete less, less strong, and things like this may happen. And in the past, we will have that, and maybe have one panel that, that happened too. But when we see that is everywhere, including like the police department, for instance, there's a sidewalk next to the building where there is absolutely no traffic on it, and we have this type of failure as well. So, we think that there's something else happening, we just don't know what it is right now. Of course, it doesn't help when, when trucks do park on the sidewalk, you know, that creates problems too. But this seems to be more of a spalling as opposed to a structural fracture.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John, what's the possibility of like the snow removal chemicals or the calcium chloride? Could that be playing a factor?
Yeah, it could be, and this is, this is why we do the air entrainment on the concrete, because the entrainment protects the concrete from that. I mean, as you know, all the bridges are made of concrete, and this doesn't happen to bridges because they use air entrainment as well. And then when you look at the older sidewalks that we had, even around the common, some of the older sidewalks, you see there's no issues with them. And you can look at many streets in town, we've had concrete sidewalks, and we don't have that. So, if, if this was an issue of the ICERS, then it will be happening on all of the concrete sidewalks, not just the new ones.
I guess my only comment is with such a high failure rate, I suppose any future bids probably be take, you know, to take that cost of replacement into consideration, and so probably wise to maybe just sit back a little bit and see if the industry can straighten that out.
Just one question, I guess, is if we haven't already, you know, is there any possibility that we can identify a contractor, a contractor that this is happening with, whether it be workmanship or mix? You know, I mean, you know, accidents happen, and you know, things happen, but like Mike said, with such a high failure rate, a hundred panels that we're placing this year.
Yeah, it would have, it would have been nicer if it only happened to one contractor.
Multiple.
Is multiple.
Yeah.
Multiple contractors. So, and then they also get the product from different places. So, again, if we could identify just one plant, okay, this is, I'm not going to name one, but if this is plant A that it's happening to, it would be easier. But unfortunately, concrete has been coming from different plants and different crews actually doing the work. So, so that's why it's harder for us to pinpoint it. We have taken samples on some of them, and air entrainment has been low in some of them, but not enough to like decide, okay, this is what is happening throughout. So, again, it's not, it's not just here. If it was just us and just one contractor and just one plant...
Easier to solve, yeah.
Like I said, we talked to different colleagues in the state, and it's been happening to just, just about everybody. Everyone's I talked to was doing concrete sidewalks, it's happening to.
And John, did you say you already talked to the sidewalk committee?
No, no. After talking to you, I wanted to stop by here first, and I'm not looking for a vote, but just to get a feelings on it, and then we'll probably update the sidewalk committee on the same, that if they don't see us doing any concrete sidewalks in the near future, I mean, we'll expect to go back to it.
Right.
But if they don't see us doing it, this is the reason why. And Mike hit it right on the head. I mean, if we keep on doing this to contractors, then the cost of one sidewalk is going to be twice or three times the cost that it would have been otherwise, because they know they have to come back, so they're going to charge us for it, so...
Yes, sir.
Do we have any plans to do anything with the damaged panels now?
Yes, the contractors are coming back to replace them, so you're going to be seeing that happening this year.
But we might see the same problem occur.
Unfortunately, yeah, but...
No, I know, I'm just...
That's the only recourse we have.
I know.
We, we thought about doing different things, like going back to asphalt, but it's just not going to look good on a concrete sidewalk to have patches of asphalt, so unfortunately, that's, that's the only solution we have right now.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have Brian Curtin here to have the board approve and sign off on some, some bonds. We recently had a bond anticipation note sale on, on June 26th to fund a couple of projects that were previously authorized by town meeting. So, Brian's here to fill, fill the board in on the details and get the votes that he needs to make the bonds official. Brian?
Mr. Curtin. Thank you, Paul. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. As Paul had mentioned, these two capital projects were voted at the May 2018 town meeting. First one was for the DPW recreational facility, which is a project that's going to be $16,500,000 in total. This is the first phase of it, and what we are doing is floating a bond anticipation note, a one-year note for just the costs that are involved in the first phase. The second project is for capital, I mean for water mains, $5,300,000. It was authorized also at the May 2018 town meeting, this is the first phase of that. It's $700,000. These, this, these loans, a total of $4,700,000. They are, they will mature next July 17th, 2020. The financing, temporary financing will be available on the 19th, this Friday, July 19th. I've asked for a vote of the board to approve the temporary borrowing of $4,700,000. As I sent this information to you, you probably saw that we, the town, because of its AAA credit rating, which is very, you know, the highest credit rating you can have, the town received a net interest cost of 1.4999, which is effectively 1.50% with a premium of $35,057.30. The interest, when this is due and payable a year from now, will be $105,162.50. Don't we wish we could all borrow at 1.50%? So, the town is in a very favorable position to be able to borrow this amount of money for one year at that low interest rate. Take any questions?
Oh, it's the bond issues. It's what we do.
It's what we do. Temporary funding until, you know, it won't flow to 20-year, probably most likely, most of these will be 20-year bonds until a good part of the project is completed, but that'll be sometime in the future. Like I said, this is the first phase of these two capital projects. I'm sending around the documents that have to be signed, and appreciate your signature on them.
I'm just very happy that we're still at AAA rating.
Absolutely.
Once again, the town, as Mr. Patrick used to say all the time, we have a great group. Now, we have a better group.
Yep. Thank you to Brian and John and the whole team, because the rate we get on these is unbelievable. So, really phenomenal rate, and it's a credit to the town's, to the town's finance and the finance team, so... I know you guys got a lot of signatures over there, so...
We just need a motion and a vote to approve them.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was writing...
Chairman, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, while you're doing that, I'll make the motion that we approve the bond anticipation notes resulting in the $4,700,000 financing for the two capital projects, as Brian has outlined in this note here to us.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Motion by Bob, second by Jimmy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Disdain? Against? Five zero zero, Ben. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just will note that BYBNY Mellon Capital Markets were the winning bidder with that coupon rate of 1.4999%. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Missed one. Go ahead, I'll just be listening.
Need a few minutes?
I'll be listening. I got to sign all those too, so I'll be listening and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have Town Clerk Amy Warfield to update us on, on town election schedule and appoint some poll workers.
Thank you very much, Paul. Yes, every year, I need to present to the Board of Selectmen the list of potential poll workers. You have that in the backup, and just need that you approve them. This is, not saying that these are the only people that we can hire for elections, but because we have four elections next year in 2020, we'll probably need a good-sized group of them, so... First thing?
Betty, do I have to make that motion?
Yeah, I'm just going to let that off. It's just an appointment or...
No, it's not an appointment, it's just an approval by the board on the list that I provided.
So, we just need to make a motion to approve?
Just to approve all this that I provided.
I mean, yes, go ahead. I have a... Yeah? I'll make the motion to approve. The list?
Yep, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll make that second, yeah.
A motion and second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Disdain? Against? Five zero zero, Ben. No one signed that one there.
And then the second thing going along with that is that I'm just requesting or notifying you of the date that I've picked for the town election for 2020. That's in, also in the backup. I've chosen April 4th, which is a Saturday, which we have Saturday local elections, and I usually go through and compare that against the holidays and everything else that goes on in April. And that came out to be probably the best day. And I gave you the complete list there of all four elections for 2020, just so you can put that on your radar and know what will be keeping the clerk's office occupied next year.
You know, just notice this, that I'm like signing all this paperwork, and I'm not really, I'm listening, but it's because of the confidence I have. You've done such a great job in all the years that I've been here, sitting on this board with this election, that it's like second nature for you. So, for me to sit here and do this, I'm not even worried about it. So, gentlemen, we have anything to say? Add?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a couple...
Well, thank you.
Town election is eight o'clock start.
Yeah.
Are the others seven?
The presidential will be six.
Six, okay.
But the other two, the presidential primary and the state primary will be seven.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? Michael?
If I may, my question to you, each year, we, we have this discussion regarding poll workers. How does one become a poll worker if they have an interest?
Well, if they have an interest, they can come by the office. We have an application they can fill out, depending on when they might want, might be able to or might want to work. We kind of try to look at the schedule, and then, yeah, again, with this many elections, we are looking for if people are interested. There's no age restriction, well, there is an age restriction, if they're a regular poll worker, they do need to be a registered voter, so they have to be over the age of 18. But for every precinct, I can use two 16, 17-year-olds. And what I've done in the past too is use them a lot on the processing of the early voting ballots that we have to do. We will probably have early voting at the presidential election and at the presidential primary. It's unclear whether the state will approve funding for the state primary to have early voting. But, so that's, again, even another chunk of election workers that I will need, and the 16, 17-year-olds kind of have that, that qualification, and I can use them, so...
Oh, actually, that, good to know that the younger folks, I didn't realize could be part of the process. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
And it's, it's actually, you know, the, the older experienced workers enjoy them because they bring a lot more, a lot different energy, they like teaching someone else how to do something, so it's just been a win-win. We use 16 and 17-year-olds for at least past five or six years when the state law allows us to start to use them, so...
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry if I missed it when I was signing the papers, but is there a certain number or maximum number of 16 and 7-year-olds you can have?
Yes, it's two per precinct. So, what happens is I can use 14 of them per shift.
The only reason I ask that is just maybe reach out to the high school to see if it's some sort of political science class that kids could get some experience. That's the only reason I made this.
I've found three really kind of stable groups that I can get kids from. One is band kids. I don't know if it's because I, my daughter was in band, and I know, but those kids are always interested in volunteering. The National Honor Society kids also like to do it because they're getting credit for... And then now, because a lot of the kids, either in history classes or in some of the political science classes, they are interested in it. That, that is a third source that I've been able to get, kids that want to volunteer and come.
All right, thank you.
Good suggestions, and I'm trying to tap into it.
The presidential election, there's no school that day?
Yeah, there's no school on November, there will be no school on November 3rd. I've already kind of, I do that about almost four years in advance, but at least two years in advance, the schools and I work on that. The one that, the state primary is always a hard one because that's in September, but our turnout is usually a little bit lower. The presidential primary, there will be school, but we will also have early voting. So, a lot of people do like to take advantage of the early voting, so that takes the, a little bit of the pressure off people coming into the school on that day. But again, school has been wonderful on, because we can kind of isolate the voting down to the gym and working with our, our loop around the building. Schools always been really... And it's actually, you know, the older experienced workers enjoy them because they bring a lot more, a lot different energy, they like teaching someone else how to do something, so it's just been a win-win. We use sixteen and seventeen-year-olds for at least past five or six years when the state law allows us to start to use them, so.
Great.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I missed it when I was signing the papers, but is there a certain number or maximum number of sixteen and seven-year-olds you can have?
Yes, it's two per precinct. So, what happens is I can use fourteen of them per shift.
The only reason I ask that is just maybe reach out to the high school to see if it's some sort of political science class that kids could get some experience. That's the only reason I made this.
I've found three really kind of stable groups that I can get kids from. One is band kids. I don't know if it's because I, my daughter was in band and I know, but those kids are always interested in volunteering. The National Honor Society kids also like to do it because they're getting credit for... And then now, because a lot of the kids, either in history classes or in some of the political science classes, they are interested in it. That is a third source that I've been able to get, kids that want to volunteer and come.
All right, thank you.
Good suggestions, and I'm trying to tap into it.
The presidential election, there's no school that day?
Yeah, there's no school on November, there will be no school on November third. I've already kind of, I do that about almost four years in advance, but at least two years in advance, the schools and I work on that. The one that, the state primary is always a hard one because that's in September, but our turnout is usually a little bit lower. The presidential primary, there will be school, but we will also have early voting. So, a lot of people do like to take advantage of the early voting, so that takes the, a little bit of the pressure off people coming into the school on that day. But again, school has been wonderful because we can kind of isolate the voting down to the gym and working with our loop around the building. School's always been really pretty good at working with us and us working with them to make sure that we don't have a problem.
And the early voting will be here, again?
Yep, the early voting will be here in the main hearing room. It works out, again, again, it's another flow issue, we have a pretty good flow of getting people in and out.
Okay, on that note, we need a vote, right? Is this approval?
Oh, we've already...
About the annual election date, is what I need.
Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion that we approve April fourth as the election date for 2020.
Motion by Nick, second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Staying? Five zero zero.
Thank you all so much, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your support to the clerk's office and all that, I appreciate it.
It's easy, you do a great job for us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Chairman, next up, we have a public hearing at 6:30 for Total Wine.
Good timing, Mr. Chairman.
Someone have to read that, Betty? Here's the...
You run a pretty good...
Fisher, nice job, nicely done.
Mr. Chairman, you want to have Selectmen take us, read the ad, you usually, it's good of volunteering for that.
It's not a sell site, so I'll give them a break.
Okay, you want me to read the...
Yep.
Okay, from the town administrator's office, notice hereby given under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 138 that a public hearing will be held on Monday, July 15th, 2019 at 6:30 PM at the Town Hall Meeting Room, Main Meeting Room, second floor, 29th Center Street, Burlington, Mass. on the application fine, Massachusetts Fine Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Total Wine Spirits Beer &amp; More, for an application for an all-alcohol license amendment for, I don't know if there's supposed to be two separate issues, but all alcohol license amendment for alteration of premises, Section 15, all alcohol off premise, located at 34 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass. All interested parties will be given opportunity to be heard.
And this is an amendment to the current application.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Attorney Trish Fonsworth, Lawson &amp; White's in Boston, and with me is Bob Schaefer, General Counsel to Total Wine. So, we're here in this alteration in premises, basically to add 10,000 square feet to the existing premises. Bob can explain more in detail, but basically, you know, the CVS space has freed up, so the landlord asked Total Wine if they needed additional space, and also Total Wine did because they have, you know, had customers say that it gets a little cramped, you know, at busy times, seasonal sales, so that's what we're here for. You know, we have approval for planning, we don't expect, I just want to make it clear, we don't expect more customers. This is really just to, you know, give more space to existing clientele.
Gentlemen, I'll start with Mr. Priest.
I mean, I looked at the documentation, I'm looking at the floor plan now. I guess, I mean, my only question really is, in the new retail space up front in the orange, are those, is that seating? Is that, are those just smaller end caps? Do we know what those are?
Those are shelving.
Just smaller shelving units?
Yes, and so, what the pink area is supposed to depict is the new space. Some of that, this doesn't give you an as-current version of the shelving, so what this is supposed to illustrate is, once we have additional space, we're going to open up the areas where people shop. We've got some feedback from customers that it's a little cramped and difficult to navigate when it's particularly busy, so you've got carts and sometimes ladders in the aisles if you're stocking. And so, the idea was to accommodate the public need for better flow inside the retail space and, at the same time, give us some additional storage space so that we can take some of the product. We have almost 13,000 SKUs, so we want to take some of the product off of the retail floor space, put it back into storage, and open that area up so people can shop in a way that's more enjoyable when they're inside the store.
Okay, great. And this doorway here in the new storage area that's at the front, I believe?
It's actually, it's actually, the pink area where it says new storage is part of the CVS space right now. So, CVS, if you are looking at what used to be the old Bauer hockey space, now Total Wine, to the right of that, if you're facing it, is CVS. They're taking their space and moving all the way to the end of the center. They're under construction right now, and so that space that they occupied will be given up and available. The landlord approached us and said, "I'm going to have some dead space. Do you need any?" And coincidentally, we felt like we did because there was an increasing public demand for more flow inside the store. We also want to try to add what we call in-store pickup area, which will allow people who don't want to check out at the checkout area, which also can be busy at times, to order online. They can come to a dedicated desk and pick up their orders inside the store away from the register, which also makes it easier to flow inside the store.
Sure, that all sounds great, and I really have no problem with it. I was just, my question I was going to ask is, is this door a fire door? Is it meant to be an entrance for employees? I was just curious what the purpose of the door was, the diagram.
The door being...
The door that leads out to the front of the new storage area.
So, that area will, if you see, the loading dock is just to the left of, on your drawing, you can see there's a crosshatched area where the inventory comes in. It enters an existing storage room on the first floor, and that door will allow only employees, not the public, to enter into that expanded storage area, which is in pink.
At the front of the building?
No, this is the, this is the back of the building. So, the front of the building is here at the bottom, so you enter here. These are the cash registers, checkout lines here, this is what we call...
Ah, okay, sorry, I was looking at it the wrong way.
No, no, it's okay, I understand completely, so...
Okay. No, I'm with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is perhaps the worst-kept secret in recent history in Burlington. I think it's been widely anticipated that you were going to occupy that space. I think the people in town have known for some time. I've reviewed the back of material, I have, I have no issues with the plans as presented.
Jimmy?
I have two questions, well, actually, one question, one kind of comment. The pickup area for online sales, as you know, we're aggressive about underage people obtaining alcohol. How is that area going to be controlled?
So, that area will, the way it works is, there's an order that gets filled and picked when the order comes in online. When someone comes to the ISP area, that person has to present their identification. Since we had some issues earlier this year, we've redoubled our efforts on training. We have, in all the cash registers, including at the ISP, a device that will allow us to scan the driver's license or other ID, sometimes, not always, but a couple times, we had situations where, not in this store, but in others, the clerks are not able to do the quick math and know whether someone is 21 or not, and so this will eliminate the human error that we've had happen, not very often, but a few times. So, everyone knows that when someone comes in to pick up their orders, that order has to be pulled. It may have been an order placed by Bob, but Sally comes in to pick it up, Sally may be Bob's wife, Sally has to present ID because she can't, she cannot take possession of that alcohol unless she's 21 as well.
So, I just want to make sure it wasn't like some restaurants, too, you order the product or, and they leave it on a shelf, you come in, grab it and go, so it's always going to be manned or, you know, maintained, there's always going to be an employee there?
Yes, there will always be an employee who is dedicated to the ISP area, and the orders are not, you cannot kick them off at the counter, they're in a back area, they have names on them, and they have to, there's an order form, they have to sign the order form so that we make sure that the order that was placed is the order that's filled and that the person who's receiving the order is of age.
Basically, the only thing they're not doing is paying for it there.
Yes, that's correct.
One other question I had, not so much specific to the building, but to the plaza. Have you talked to the landlord at all about that entrance closest to you into the plaza, right by the bank, because that, to me, is just not a very well-designed area.
I'm not sure if you're referring to this, the way they have it configured now, the first entrance that you come to as you're, as you're coming down the hill is an exit-only area. I don't think it always was the case.
Well, you can enter legally if you're coming from Woburn.
Yes, but not if you're coming down the hill, and there's a no-left turn lane that side.
That light backs up so much that it's just a constant flow of people taking the illegal left, and I just, I just think that it's an unsafe situation, and I'd be happy if you talked to landlord about at least looking at it, because now with your business there, it's a lot more volume than there was at, say, the hockey store, and with Target, now we get the bigger CVS, that plaza is going to get busier than it was before. And I'm hoping they take a look at it and say, you know, "Let's look at this first entrance to see what we can do as far as improved safety, improving traffic flow," because even to get out of there, it backs way, way up into your plaza, and it can be an issue, especially during the winter.
I agree, and I, one of the things that we have discussed with the landlord is, we've offered to hire off-duty police officers to man that intersection at the particularly high customer times, holiday seasons, weekends, as needed. It's more of a holiday issue, to be candid, than it is throughout the year, and so, but I agree with you, we're cognizant of that intersection, we've talked to the landlord about it. You know, I don't, I think the landlord is happy to have us hire off-duty police officers to navigate that intersection, but we haven't, we haven't talked beyond that about changing the intersection in any way.
Might be of some value to at least open discussion with them about it.
Thank you, we'll do that.
You know, before, one second, Paul, I think it's a great idea, I think that it's more of a planning board issue than ours, but I think that if you were to hop on with that, and if you wanted to go talk to them in the planning board, I think it's a great issue. So, if something comes up on that point, maybe we could send an email off to the planning board, discuss it somehow. Sorry, Paul.
That's quite all right. Where, do you know where the ISP pickup area is going to be located?
Yes, if you, if you, if you look in the area that's, that's green on the chart, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a very small rectangular box in the bottom of the pink area, the sort of lower right-hand quadrant, and just next to that, you see relocate, R-E-L-O-C-I-S-P. So, that's the relocated ISP area.
Nothing about the structural situation, a couple of quick questions. How are the classes or the visitors, you know, the section in the back that people would use for classes and things, how is that going?
I think it's going very well. That's, that's not going to be changed, that is going to be left essentially the way it is now. We have a lot of demand for more classrooms, we, we have, in response to a lot of consumers saying that they want to learn more about the products that they're considering, we've expanded the number of tastings and classroom events that we've done by about 40 percent, and that's across the country, but including in Massachusetts, and it's been very well-received, and we haven't had any issues at all.
My wife and daughter went to one recently, and they had a great time there that night.
That's great.
You indicated that you don't anticipate there's going to be a big influx in customers, but you're not going to turn them away if they show up, right?
No, of course, but sometimes people think, "Oh, you know, you double your size," which we're not. You know, you're having double customers, and that's parking and traffic and all of that, and that really isn't what happens. So, I just wanted to be clear that none of those things were triggered or concerned.
And if I could just add to that, I mean, it's an investment on the part of our company, obviously, to take on this additional space. We also think that once we expand the space, we, and we want it to be an enjoyable shopping experience, we will probably hire a few additional people because you have a bigger area that you have to cover. So, we don't want customers in the back of the new retail area not feeling like they're getting as, as high a level of service as they got before, so we do anticipate hiring about, we've talked between five and 10 additional people. So, just because we have more real estate to cover, and we want to make sure that people are served well.
Thank you.
So, real quick, I'm just glad you put in the new catch register system. That was, that was a big plus for me, I didn't know that was going in, and I'm very happy that it's got to be in there now, so there's less of a chance of selling to a minor. So, that's all I have to say. Gentlemen, we have a motion.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, can you just open up to the public?
Public hearing, you're right.
Thank you.
Mr. Zanizio? No, I'd like to open up the public hearing if anybody has anything to say, seeing there being nobody there.
I can close it.
Motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Okay, now, we have a motion for the article.
So, the motion is to alter the premises. Betty, is that it?
I would do it right here, where I guess we're going to make a motion for the all-alcohol license amendment to their application for an alteration of premises.
So, it's just for the alteration of the premises, we're not changing anything else?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Paul, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Staying against? Five zero zero in favor?
Thank you.
Do you have a target date? Do you have a target date when you think you may?
Well, we would like to do it as soon as possible, but the problem is that CVS is encountering some delays in their moving, so we were hoping to get it done by the holiday season, and we just learned last week that CVS is not going to be able to make that happen. So, it looks like it may not happen until after the end of the season, which is a disappointment for us, but it's not something that we had control of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seguino, 147.
And next up, Mr. Chairman, we have another, we have another public hearing for liquor license. This original application is being pulled and resubmitted, so I don't know if you want just a brief update, sort of what's going on with this one, or...
So, the applicant has, had informed me that they were...
So, before we get, before we start talking about this, Michael?
Yes, I want to recuse myself from discussion on this matter.
Sure.
Sorry, Betty.
That's okay. So, we received a letter saying they wanted to expand their business into, into create a package store, so there would be, now be a gas station in a package store, but in the grand scheme of their letter, they did not mention they were tearing down the Shell Station, tearing down the D'Angelo's next door and creating one large place. So, which that means is a whole nother issue. You go through building, you go through planning, once planning has said, "Yes, this site is appropriate for, for this type of issue," then, then we move forward. So, it's a little premature.
Okay, great. So, at this point, do we just continue the public hearing, or are we going to postpone it, or are we going to wait for a new application?
We could just, yeah, they're going to have to submit a new application once all their building plans are improved with planning and building, so they're, they're a little bit far ahead in the process in terms of coming to see the board on this particular one, so they're going to have to go, they're going to have to go through the, the other gauntlet before they, they come in here for, to work with you guys on the license.
So, that's just a technicality, you have to just open it and then close it, and then we will start all over with a brand-new public hearing notice at a later date.
So, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Seeing there being nobody in the room, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? A motion? Second, motion and second by, and all those in favor?
Aye.
So, and one abstention, I'm assuming, right? Michael? So, four zero one, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, someone want to grab Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should you not?
Okay.
Yes, I do.
So one forty-eight, Bob.
Another public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Just getting the notice here to be read into the record, I don't know if we have a volunteer, but.
I just, I just want to say, the chairman's doing a great job because he's right on the, right on the minute. It's exactly six fifty-five.
It almost never happens, right? We usually wait and nor.
You can have your town administrator read it since he has it.
I'll be happy to read it since Selectman Tigges read the last one. Okay. We at the right time, Betty? Yep, perfect time, okay. The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at or after six fifty PM at the Town Hall, twenty-nine Center Street, Burlington, Mass, second floor, main hearing room, to consider an application for approval of the transfer of an existing wines, wines and malt beverage, beverages with cordial, cordials slash liquors from Lester's Roadside Barbecue, Inc., DBA Lester's Roadside Barbecue, located at three seventy-six A Cambridge Street, to Towah Sub Group LLC, DBA White Coconut Thai Restaurant, for use in the operation of a full-service restaurant to be located at a different location, two eleven Middlesex Turnpike, as allowed pursuant to General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve, on premise. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Betty, you have a quick update on this?
I do. This application has already been approved. There's no changes, everything's exactly the same. The public hearing, however, should have said, as you may have noticed, cordials and liquors was not in the first public hearing. So that's all we're doing today. You need to just discuss whether or not you want them to have cordials or liquors, and if so, we'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. So, gentlemen, I will start with the Alcohol Subcommittee.
I have one question. The restaurant is full-service, the liquor license is not, correct?
The restaurant is a, is a full-service restaurant, it's, it's your typical restaurant where they will, the servers will wait on the customers.
So because we said specifically beer, wines and cordials, that's all, they, they don't get to have a full-service liquor license?
Well, what we approved was just beer and wine, uh, wines and malt. So now they, we want to give them something a little extra, which is the liquors.
That's it, thank you.
Um, so when, were the cordials and liquors part of the Lester's?
Yeah, yes, it was.
So it's just, all right, it's just a matter of clearing up a few missing words there.
Yes.
Cordials, liquors wasn't included in the first advertisement for the public hearing, so therefore it got left out of the, the transfer. Okay, I'm good with it.
Mike?
No, I'm good.
Priest?
All set.
All set. So seeing we're being all set, I'd like to open a public hearing. Anybody, nobody here?
I can move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, five, zero, zero in favor of the other. Okay, now we need a motion for transfer of wine, alcohol, cordials, liquor licenses.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we transfer the wines and malt with cordials and liquors license from Lester's Roadside Barbecue Incorporated doing businesses, Lester's Roadside Barbecue, to Towah Sub Group LLC doing businesses, White Coconut Thai Restaurant at two eleven Middlesex Turnpike.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, second by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, wait thirty-seven seconds and we'll move on to, no, one forty-nine.
Fortunately, that rule doesn't apply to this one, so we can get started right up.
All right, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have some appointments and reappointments for the Council on Aging Committee. If there are no questions or objections from the board, I would ask that the listing of members that you have in your packet be appointed to the, to the Council on Aging and that have the board waive the standard fifteen-day waiting period.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if I may, as liaison to COA, let me, let me just first say that this is an incredibly dedicated group on this COA. They are there at each and every meeting, their attendance is almost one hundred percent at each of these, and they, they have an awful lot to offer. So I would be more than pleased to make the motion to approve the seven people named in the backup material to continue serving on the COA.
So a motion by Mike, second by?
I'll second, but I do have a quick question. Do we have to also acknowledge the alternate in there, Mike?
Please.
And Rose Magliozzi, who happens to be our, Paul will recall, she, she was our Volunteer of the Year recently at the COA. In fact, she was there, I, I just bumped into her again up there, oh, at the, at the birthday bash, the over ninety birthday bash that they held recently, she was there helping out. Rose is wonderful, she'd be a wonderful addition to, to their group.
She's going to be very pleased to meet my mother.
I'll second Mike's motion.
So a motion by Mike, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, five, zero, zero, Betty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we're looking for board approval related to liquor licenses. Recently, as the board knows, we were surprised to learn that a petition was filed at the State House for new liquor licenses for the redevelopment of the mall. As you know, the board is the liquor licensing authority within the town and voted unfavorably on these licenses when they were proposed. We thought that it was important for the committee reviewing this up at the State House to understand the board's position on these licenses so that they could take that into consideration during their deliberations. So I know Selectman Hogan's been working on this, so I'll turn it over to Bob for some additional, some additional words and update for the board.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Paul is correct, we were not notified that this had been submitted. Also, we were not informed, you know, cordially just informed that there was even a hearing going on that we weren't informed about, that we weren't looking for because we didn't know it had been submitted. So we've, we've been, yeah, blindsided on this. We did, Joe and I did have meetings with them, we were trying to negotiate a number that they didn't, you know, they weren't ready to give into, they, they said they wanted their nine additional. Betty has worked on, we've seen the map, and for the people who are watching, there is a map available showing how congested the area down around the mall is. And then to add nine additional licenses to seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike, which is the mall address, had, gave us concern. Gave us concern for public safety issues, gave us concern for the sheer number of, of the traffic. And, and we just thought that, you know, if we give, if we gave them half of what they were looking for, not even more than half, and they felt the need, they could come back. They, and they really, other than just saying they're going to have new, better restaurants, I don't know how we have better restaurants than some of the restaurants we already have in town. But they indicated that they wanted the nine, and they said that they weren't going to start any reconstruction until they had the licenses, and we've seen that that's not true because they tore down the building and they've built a new one and they're working in the Sears building. So it's, it's just been a little frustrating. I've been in touch with a couple of the committees over at the State House, and professional licensure is, is where we're, you know, going to be responding to their request to be kept up to date. And there's nothing on the immediate horizon that we know of for a vote. But we're going to keep in touch with them just to make sure we, we know what's going on. So we're going to take a vote, send the vote to them. The previous vote was two, four, and three against, and we'll take a vote and send the new one to them. Hopefully, it'll reflect what I've been working on. But, yeah, and I still feel that giving them nine licenses, dedicated licenses to the mall, when they've got three dedicated they've had for five years and not done anything with. They've got five stores that are open, they've got a couple of other licenses that are available, available to them. And when you drive up Middlesex Turnpike across from the mall, you can see construction of a couple of new restaurants over there. We've got, on the other side of where the district is, we've got five licenses that have bought the property. Third Ave is within, what, three or four minutes from the mall. So there's an awful lot of licenses down there, and some of these restaurants that are already open are under construction have invested their time and energy and money into Burlington and into their restaurants. And I would hate to see us create such a glut of restaurants with alcohol licenses that some of the existing people who have committed to us and committed to being here start to close. So that was kind of our thinking at the time, if the chairman wishes to add to that.
Before I add to anything, I want to let the, the selectmen speak, and then you guys can go from there. Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, I was actually one of the two that voted in favor of it. I'm not in favor of how this was handled without our knowledge. So I will be supporting that we send this to the State House.
Good. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as the licensing authority here in, in town, certainly our voices need to be heard at the State House. I, I too feel that the system was, was subverted, perhaps, maybe that's not the right word. But at, at any rate, nineteen licenses at that one address is excessive, in my opinion. And the fact that the Burlington Mall chose not to continue these negotiations with us and go directly to town meeting was, was disappointing, to say the least. I voted against this, last time it was before us, I intend to vote against it. Again, this, this go around, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I also agree that this is, this was probably poorly handled. I have a couple of quick questions. Have we talked to the chief about public safety if, and he raised a concern? Right. Okay. And then I guess my second question is, you know, has the mall considered parking? I mean, you know, retail versus restaurants, a completely different scenario. And I know that, you know, on the weekends especially, the mall's already jam-packed. I mean, what would, you know, nine more restaurant-based?
And, and that's part of our concern, for, you know, the public safety issue is, you know, not only getting all those people into the mall, but what if we have an emergency? You know, just the other day, I mean, even during the construction, getting in and out of the mall was horrific.
Right. I, I understand that the mall as a, I guess, as retail trends shift, the mall is doing what it can to adapt to a new climate, and I respect that. But, you know, the, the way this was handled, the, the fact that they're, they're dedicated to the, the address, I'm not a big fan of. You know, I just, I think that there could be a, a better middle ground that we could meet at versus just giving in to, to these nine licenses. So I'll also be putting a yes.
Okay. Well, let me just say this, I sat here, I listened to it, seems like we're pretty much, every one of us is on the same page. Bob, we did a ton of work on this prior to this happening. We tried to work every avenue possible, and they were basically said to us, we want the nine or we don't want anything at all. That's what they said to us. So at this point, I have no feelings whatsoever saying no to this article or to this, going to the State House. The way it was handled by an individual that takes care of our town wasn't very nice to the town of Burlington at this point. There's a million things I could say, but I don't know where I'm going to get sued, where I won't get sued, so I'm going to keep it at that.
And just, just to remind the, the, those who are watching, Mr. Chairman, we are the legal local licensing authority. We're the ones who do all the paperwork for all of the, how many licenses do we have? Is it over fifty or sixty now?
We have fifty.
Fifty, and then we have a whole bunch that are out there dedicated, that aren't being used right now, that we have to do all the paperwork. We have three on the agenda tonight alone, when even for renovations, and the amount of paperwork that comes through the office, everything almost comes to a stop when they're working on these things. And then in December, November, December, January, when the renewals are up, you've got fifty of them that you've got to do with all of the paperwork. They work for us. The police, who do the enforcement, work for us. The building department, who approves these things, work for us. Why shouldn't we have say in the negotiations and at the state level, rather than town meeting? Who wants to, I mean, we want to support business in town, but we're in the midst of negotiating these things, and it was just pulled out from under us. And I just, I think that's inappropriate.
Well, so all I can really say at this point is thank you for finishing my speech.
Okay. You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
So at that point, I'm not going to get into anything else, I'm just going to look for a, a motion to approve or disapprove, I don't know which way.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board not support, which is House Bill thirty-six seventy-six, requesting nine more liquor licenses for the town of Burlington, town of Burlington, dedicated to the Burlington Mall, as we, as requested by town meeting. And further, that the board send the attached letter that we have, speaking, saying all the things we've been saying here, to the Joint Committee on Professional Licensure, informing them of the board's position. And further, that our state senator and our state representative be informed of this vote, which is, now, it will be not supporting, so five, zero, that we're not supporting?
You have to vote first.
We have to vote.
No, no, I'm just asking for clarification.
Yes, that would be.
Compared to the last time when we voted, it was two, three. So now I just want to make sure we get the numbers in order.
Yep, the motion says not, not to support. So it's a little different from a typical one.
Right, right. So that's my motion, minus the, the five, oh, comment at the end there.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Nick. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, all those abstain. So five, zero, zero, five, zero, zero, not, put this through.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And this was article three of the current draw, two thousand eighteen, standing for the draw.
Okay.
Thank you. One quick comment, Bob, I'd like to say thank you for all the work you put in after our meetings on this. You put a lot of time in this, a lot of conversations with the State House, back and forth with Betty. So I just want to say thank you for putting that time in.
Yeah, and, and what you saw tonight with the, with the three licenses plus this, Betty has been, you know, locked into this alcohol license issues going on around us right now. So thank you for that, Betty.
Okay, five fifty-one, approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several weeks ago, we received an email from a resident asking the board to provide a letter of support to ask the state to fully fund its obligations related to publication, public education. Selectman Priest has brought this forward as an agenda item for the board, and he can give us an update as to what we're hoping to accomplish with this letter.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll keep this short and sweet.
I'll do my best.
Several months ago, our school committee here in Burlington wrote a resolution in support of urging our state legislature to, what we say, fully fund our education system. And basically what's happening is the foundation budget that was created is no longer sufficient to support our students and their needs. And it's causing a great, I guess, divide in the dollars that could be spent on our students. Meaning that here in Burlington alone, we stand to gain over a million dollars in state funding for our students. In places like Springfield and Worcester, they stand to gain sixty to ninety million dollars, and that's annually. So you can see that, you know, communities across the Commonwealth are being drastically underfunded. So what this letter states is that we, as a board, support the resolution that the school committee put forth in a move solidarity, that our, our children, our, our most precious commodity, are well-funded and educated.
Fantastic. Thank you. Gentlemen, Michael?
Okay.
Good. Jim?
No.
That was very easy, so I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to put this together for us. I need approval of this.
I'll make the motion that we- I'll make the motion that we approve the letter.
Motion by Nick. Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, against? Five zero zero, Betty. Thank you. Okay, one fifty-two, economic development director search.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board recalls, one of our major initiatives during the past budget cycle was the request for an economic development director position. We're very grateful for the support we received from many boards, committees, and ultimately town meeting. The new fiscal year has started, and we are looking to get this initiative begun. I will be putting together a committee to advise me and provide feedback on the candidates. If anyone has any suggestions on someone that I missed on this list, please let me know. But right now, I've come up with Joanne Follis from HR, Whitney, the budget analyst, who worked tirelessly on the original proposal, John Keely from Conservation, a selectman, Ways and Means member, a member from the chamber, and perhaps maybe a town meeting member or other interested citizen that we could probably have on the committee. And I just wanted to put this out there to the board members, so if there's anybody that you think that we're missing, or if you have a suggestion on someone who you think might be helpful for the committee, or if you wanna pick a selectman to participate with us now, that would be helpful as well. So just an update for the board.
Gentlemen?
Did I hear you mention planning board member, director?
I, a staff, planning board member or a planning board staff member? I spoke to Ms. LaRue a couple of weeks ago, and she was gonna let me know whether she thought that it would be more beneficial for a board member to participate or have one of their staff members, so.
So if anybody would like to jump on the bandwagon?
I'll volunteer.
You'll volunteer for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Just one? Just one?
Yep, unless you think we need more.
You know what, I sort of, Nick and I sort of, she had those economic development today, to tell you what, if I fill in, if he can make one, blah, blah, blah.
Sure.
All right. Awesome. Okay.
Great.
We need approval on this. So do I have a motion to, we want a motion to put Nick and Mike on the?
Well, that would be your appointment, technically, so.
Let me, okay.
Correct.
Yep. No, fine. Just wanted to update the board on that.
Now, have you worked out a guideline for a timetable for all of these things as we move forward?
Once we get the original group together, we'll start to work from there. We're told that the summer's a pretty crappy time to try to hire anybody. So the goal would be to be ramped up and ready to go with the full scale by September first, ready to go. Hopefully, get the hiring process going at that point.
You said it was a crappy time, is that what you said?
Pardon me?
You said it was a crappy time of year to do that?
That's what I've been told, yeah.
That's an official designation.
I wanted some clarification. Did I say crappy?
I think you did.
I apologize.
That's the official term.
I meant to say lousy.
All righty.
Quite right. Okay. We need approval on this, Paul? Yes? Right?
If you just wanna vote the concept of what we're looking at for a committee, that would be fine.
No, then if that's the case, I'll make a motion to approve the concept and have Nick and Mike serve in that capacity.
And the general list that Paul has read to us?
Yep.
Motion by Jimmy. Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, against? Five zero zero. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the year approval.
Next up is the end-of-year transfers that we asked the board of selectmen to approve. At the risk of John not getting upset with me, I'm not gonna say anything further, because that would sort of been the history here, where the town administrator covers everything that the town accountant wants to cover. And so we'll let him go from the start. Thank you, John.
Paul usually does a crappy job introducing. FY nineteen year transfers, in the past, these have been handled in an omnibus motion at the annual town meeting in May. Recently, there's been some regulation changes that allow for these transfers to be made up to fifteen days after the end of the year. This is a welcome change to especially county offices, because it gives us another two months of spending and to try to nail down what accounts might have a deficit and how much they'll be, rather than just guessing. So that transfer can be approved up to fifteen days after the end of the year with the approval of finance committee, in our case, Ways and Means, and the board of selectmen. So as you can see in your packet, Whitney had prepared a one-page review for your, a report for your review. You can see that there's just very few accounts on there. There's, I think, nine of them, in that the deficit amounts are relatively low. This is really a testament to both the department heads, who understand and know their budget and stick to it, and to Whitney, who constantly is monitoring and contacting department heads to say, I hope we're not gonna have a problem here. She even scares me when she's doing it. So I know the report looks fairly simple, but I can tell you, the reason it is, is because of all that hard work I just mentioned by all those department heads and to Whitney. So I wanna make sure I would, I'd point that out. So last week, Whitney went to Ways and Means for their approval of the transfers outlined on the report, and tonight, we're here for the board of selectmen to do the same. You can see on the report, it's, like I said, similar to the one that's been used for many years now. On the left-hand side, you have where the funds are coming from, and on the right-hand side, you see the few accounts that are in a deficit. And below there, there's a little key that tells you what the deficits were for or why there's some available funds.
Thank you, sir. We have questions.
Just a quick question. John, did, do Ways and Means have any concerns? I mean, was there anything called out?
Nope. I would say that they were impressed that there were so few.
Awesome. Thank you.
Michael?
No, sir.
Jim?
Just a comment, I agree, that's a very small number when it comes to the budget that we have. That's fantastic. It's a great forecast.
Paul?
Yeah, no, I agree, and I will, you know, give my regular plug to the department heads. As John has said, you know, they know their budgets. Occasionally, there are quirks, but this is a small list, and that's a small amount compared to what I've seen in the past, both as a department head and as a member of this board.
Thank you. We need approval for this, right? So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Do we wanna use the twenty-nine thousand number in the motion, John?
Yeah, or the report has submitted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll mention that the number that is being transferred from these nine departments and what that money's being used for is twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. I will make the motion that we make these transfers as we have them in front of us.
Second.
Second. By Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, against? Five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Nice job. Thank you. Tell Whitney, uh, those to her. Thank God you have her, huh?
I always do it every day.
Good man.
All right. One fifty-four, plastic bags.
Next up for the board, just a quick update on the plastic bandbag in town. As the board recalls, that was an effort put forth by a couple of young people in town. It was passed January town meeting after quite a significant debate. It was ultimately approved by the Attorney General, where all town meeting articles of this nature have to go for approval. So it was approved on May thirteenth, and from that date, we have to implement it within a hundred and twenty days. So basically, the plastic bandbag will go into effect on September tenth. So we'll be working with the town clerk's office. We have it up on the website. We'll notify the chamber, and we'll try to utilize whatever databases we have in town to sort of get a letter out to some folks. Within your packet, there's a sample, packet, there's a sample of the letter that we, that we set up, as well as a listing of frequently asked questions, to just give people some quick information on the plastic bag band. So it's gonna be a learning process for us here at the town hall. It'll be a learned process for me as the enforcement officer. But between now and then, we're hopeful that, to get the word out to as many businesses as possible. I know it's not really a unique thing now. Many communities have already done this. So I'm fairly certain that most of the large businesses within the town are probably very familiar with it from some other communities where they may have a location. But, you know, we're gonna do our best to get out the word to as many places as possible, as far in advance as possible, so that they'll have all the information they need. So just an update for the board on that and for the community.
Do we have questions, gentlemen, or just wanna listen to the update and move on?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Okay. There you go.
I shouldn't say quick anymore.
You've got three minutes.
So, Paul, how does the enforcement work? Obviously, you're not gonna be going around, sort of store checking. I assume it's just reported?
It's untested yet, at this point.
Okay.
We believe that, I would imagine that if we're gonna get a complaint, it will probably be from a resident shopping someplace. And, you know, if they're unable to communicate directly with the store and get the satisfaction, then I would imagine it will result in a call to the town administrator's office at some point.
Okay. Are we gonna have the opportunity to work with the stores to, so I know when Wilmington went into effect, they had, it was just like a little index card that was taped to all their cash registers? That was like a condensed version of this FAQ? So as you were checking out, you were like, oh, it's going to affect in May? This is what I did, just like, it was like a hot sheet, almost. Do we need to reach out to businesses? Can we? I mean, I'm just kinda thinking, like, how can we?
Like I say, we're gonna try to reach out to them with as many ways as we can, you know, common victual licenses. We have a database of folks that get their scales measured from sailor weights. So we'll use as much of the information that we can in town to provide this information to them.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll disseminate it, however, however they would normally get the word out to their people.
Great. My last question is, you know, in kind with how we do the rain barrels and other programs, knowing that tote bags are of nominal cost, is there any way that, I mean, I don't know if we're allocated to do any kind of spend, but to do some sort of, you know, Burlington bag, tote bags that residents can purchase, to get them on board?
There's no funding available for that, and for whatever it's worth, it came up during the debate that the creation of the tote bags was actually worse in the environment than paper bags. So there were some folks battling back and forth in terms of the science on that, so. But the simple answer to the question is that there's no financial resources allocated to this initiative that was put forth by the students.
Okay.
Good? I don't?
No, sir.
Jim?
I got no questions.
Paul?
No, I'm good.
I have a quick question. What do you do with someone using them? Say, a small mom-and-pop store on the corner, and they use a plastic bag. What's the, you know, how do you use them anymore?
It's spelled out in there, but I think it's a warning, and then it lays out what the next violation results in. So there's a, second violation is twenty-five dollars, and every additional one's fifty dollars after that. So the first one, looks like it's a written warning, based upon the way the bylaw was written.
And that's you go down the store and tell them that, or is that?
Yep, we got funding for a badge coming in at some point.
You're getting badges?
Bag enforcement.
Think if we were Bob Monarado listening, he's got a badge.
We'll be creating a subcommittee for the complaint.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
We're actually not anticipating it. Like I say, I think this is, I think something that's been pretty well-reported on in the community, and I think that most businesses will be happy to comply. Maybe not happy, but they're more than willing to comply with our local regulations, so.
This is trending across the state, across the nation.
I do have a question.
Absolutely. No, it's too late.
No, actually, are we aware of any other towns that have had issues? Are they resolved?
No, we haven't, I haven't really seeked any other towns out for issues yet at this point, but.
Of all the two students, they must have that information.
Well, I haven't read anything, I haven't heard anything from my counterparts in other communities. I haven't heard any buzz about it being an implementation nightmare, so I'm thankful that.
Have you reached out to the other bag enforcement officers?
I have not reached out to the bag enforcement authority at the state level yet, but.
Do you guys have an association where you go for meetings and things and?
Yeah, they have their meetings in Hawaii. Hope that doesn't matter to the board.
Wait till you see that subcommittee.
So we're hopeful for a successful transition. We're not anticipating there to be, I would imagine that any problems are gonna be outliers as opposed to, you know, a regular occurrence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty, would you like us to do these individually, or would, could we, would you like me to read them off and do them all at once? The minutes?
Yes, you can read them all at once. I did have a problem with the April eighteenth, only because so many people walked in and walked out. So I think in this particular instance, we can all vote on these ones.
Okay. Was, were you, were you not here at that meeting? Were you, did you miss that because of a situation you were in? Do you remember the date of?
April?
Oh, I was there.
Okay.
I actually did not. I saw the minutes for the June tenth and June twenty-fourth. I did not see on the website, April executive session or the strategic planning session.
April eighteenth, that may have popped up later in the afternoon, so we can postpone if you want. But that particular set of minutes had fire, where you left, police, where Jim left, and we only had Jim, Bob, Mike, and Nick at that meeting. So if you wanna hold it and just review it later.
Well, if you have any concerns, why don't we not vote on it, and then you can clarify it?
I just hadn't had the chance to review.
We're on the next.
So we'll leave the eighteenth out, and we'll do the other ones?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would like to take a motion on June tenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular session.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, for June tenth, the regular session minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, against? Five zero zero. June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, regular session.
I will make that motion also, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that as well.
Motion by Jim. Oh, up, second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero, Betty in favor. June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, strategic planning meeting session.
So made.
Second.
Same two gentlemen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero, and we're gonna leave off the eighteenth. Betty?
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with subcommittees. We will start with Michael tonight, so we can.
Oh, thank you. And I will be brief tonight. I sometimes go on a little bit in that category.
Because of the big clue we had.
Well, actually, let me, let's, let me quickly thank all of the committee members, volunteers, and sponsors for the Fourth of July events. It was another successful year. I've gotten nothing but positive feedback from the community, and, believe it or not, we're looking forward to next year, even though some of us say this was our final year. But again, thank you to all those folks who participated, contributed in some form or fashion.
Thank you, Michael. You just did yeoman's work on that. It was such a great, great.
It's a nice event for the community, and I think Burlington benefits from these type of events that we have here in town. You know, it's a wonderful place to live and work and play, and, you know, certainly, it's evident almost every week on our town common. Just very, very proud to be a part of this community. Secondly, I'd just like to point out that most homes and businesses in Burlington have these new water meters that the, our DPW staff can monitor, and they have these built-in red flags that if someone has a leak, we're actually notified, and then we notify the property owners, say, listen, our system has red flagged your property as you have a potential problem over there. If you get one of those calls or notices from the DPW, please do not ignore it, even though it may be, seem insignificant at the time, like your toilet might hiss, or, you know, once every half hour or something. Over time, it adds up to a significant amount of money in terms of water and sewer charges. We've had a couple of hearings recently, people who have sort of ignored those phone calls and letters from DPW until they get their quarterly bill, and then they react, and they're asking for relief from the bill, because they didn't address it when the town first notified of them. So it may seem insignificant, a drip here and a drip there, but let me tell you, at the end of three months, it adds up to a substantial sum of money. So please, if you get the phone call, or if you get the postcard from the DPW, please take it seriously. We don't like to have these type of hearings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this extremely brief. Information Technologies, right now, we are reevaluating the policies and procedures that were set in place in 2003, looking to recommend updates to that. In all likelihood, what will happen is the subcommittee will make a recommendation, will pass it through the ISAC committee for the sake of their experience, and then present to the board for, you know, final thoughts and approval. And then just, I mean, with the weather being the way it is, I just wanted to say that I hope everybody is staying indoors where you can, drinking water. This week's going to be, you know, in the 90s, especially toward the end of the week. Next week isn't looking so great either, with a high humidity index. You know, so if you're feeling lightheaded, or, you know, you've been outside for a while, make sure you're drinking water and staying safe. Thank you.
Jim?
Nick, a great point on that, and also, if people have, you know, disabled elderly neighbors, please check on them, because this weather can really wreak havoc with their health as well. Or someone with breathing issues, as you stated, it's got to be really, really hot and humid this week. So in addition to checking yourself, check your neighbors. The audit committee is in recess till the fall, and that'll pick up again. Paul and a few of us are meeting on a small cell issue, not issue, but thought later than next week or the week after, the 22nd or 3rd, something like that. And I haven't had any more feedback, but Mike, I'll ask you, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, how's everything going at station two?
Oh, fabulous. Well, you were there, we held an open house for the public, it was very well attended.
Any kinks or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I haven't heard anything either.
All is well, but again, it's a little bit of a process, I'm sure it's going to come back to haunt us at some point in the future. I hate to say that, I don't want to jinx it, but history shows tend to have problems down the road as soon as the warranty's up. Let's hope not.
What I understand is just your basic kinks that you might imagine, they'll come across a plug that nobody's, first time you go to use it, maybe needs to be livened up or something like that. But all minor punchless type issues that we would anticipate having at this stage of the project, so, nothing.
Perfect.
And, you know, those guys will let us know if there's something not working well over there. We'll hear about it readily, regularly, quickly, frequently, so we'll be addressing that list as we go along.
Thank you.
Paul? Just to follow up on that, having sat as the selectman's representative on the original design committee for the fire station, it really is nice, especially for someone like myself, who doesn't do that stuff on a regular basis, to actually see what we talked about in the beginning come to fruition, and comes to it under budget and on time, was really a nice feeling, because an awful lot of people out of hand in making that all happen, so, you know, kudos to everybody involved, and I'm glad that the guys who are stationed down there now have something to be proud of, compared to what they were putting up with for so many years. Another thing, Mr. Chairman, 20 years ago this week, the Vietnam Veterans Moving Wall Memorial came to Burlington for an entire week visit, and there were an awful lot of people who volunteered for that, and in excess of 50,000 people came to visit in the course of the week. It was an outstanding week, a very emotional week. And the only reason I bring that up, well, not the only reason, but it's nice to talk about the success that we had 20 years ago, out in North Reading. A version of that wall, the wall that heals, will be in North Reading, August 15th to August 18th, so if there are any veterans who are looking to visit a moving wall, there's going to be one in North Reading in this area, so I just wanted to throw that out there. But 20 years ago was a big deal on the common for us that whole week.
I'm just amazed, it was 20 years.
20 years, I know it, yeah.
Wow.
That was the bicentennial year.
Wow, it's incredible. Okay, everyone's all set. I have a couple of things I'd like to mention on the chairman's report. First of all, Michael, that was a fantastic parade. You and your group did a great job. I think we actually all had fun walking in the parade. It was a little hot, but we had enough water, with the girls driving around, the guys driving around with the water. It was great to see some of the residents that we saw, and meet some new ones that I didn't know. So I did have a good time doing that. The parade itself was, I'd like to get it bigger, to be honest with you, that's what I wanted to say. And one of the things I want to say is, I would really like to get the high school band in there. I've talked to them two or three times, and.
It's a hot button issue for me.
It's a very, I really would. And I've already said to the gentleman that's in charge, I said, doesn't matter if they have a uniform or not, just let them play.
We saw some additional floats this year, and so we've been trying to encourage more and more participation in terms of neighborhoods and others to provide floats. I think that people really enjoy the floats.
They were always a big part of them, years and years.
I think that the selectman needed a band next year, so people will actually, some might not know who we are.
They'll know who to throw that.
It was like, who are those five guys walking? They're having a great time, but wow, they, no, but that's something I would like to discuss. Secondly, Mike, you hit the nail on the head with the water. They have meters that actually tell you that you have a leak. Now, for the people that don't have those meters yet, we can still put them in. There's quite a few of them down, and if you do get a water leak, there's not a lot that we can do about it. You know, with the new meter, you get a leak, we know. I'm not going to get into too much of that, because we've discussed this a number of times on subcommittee meetings, as far as that. Last thing, second to last thing, is the hot top in town. There's a lot going on in town with our hot top program that we have every year. I'd like to thank the residents for putting up with it. There's times that they have to go around, they have to go a different way, but I've heard nothing but positives about it. The police officers are very good doing their details, the town workers that are there at the time doing different jobs, they have done a great job, and I've heard nothing but positives. So thank you to the residents for not sending the emails and making the phone calls to either Betty or us about, I can't get to the mall, or I can't get to the police station.
Not on Facebook, are you?
No, not. Not on that site. Why do you go for them, Mike? Is that bad, huh?
Just ask them.
Okay, no, not. The last thing I'd like to say is, it's personal, which I always seem to kind of throw out there, something personal, I'd like to say congratulations to my father. As of, what's today, as of Wednesday, he will have the second oldest business in the town of Burlington, he'll be 59 years old. So his barber shop is the second oldest in town, and Dad, just want to say congratulations on a great job. It's been, it's been a joy for me, working with my father. Other than that?
Oldest profession in town.
What's that?
Oldest profession in town.
Go there, and it won't be nice for any of us. So I would like to say thank you for that, and that's all I have. Anybody else? That's it, we're done?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, just wanted to pass along to Mike and Nick, the 4th of July parade, we got nothing but compliments about that, as well as the fireworks. I got several compliments on just how spectacular the fireworks this year, so I guess it must have went very well on those nights. Just a quick update for the board, we had a request from Shari Ellis, that if we could just update our process so that we would pass along zoning articles that were received in the selectman's office, to both the land use committee and the zoning bylaw review committee, at the same time that we're forwarding them to the planning department. So we're working with Betty to just update our procedures there. They're going to actually look to update the town bylaw, but for us, it's as simple as just adding them on to the email distribution. So when we get a zoning article in, we'll forward it on to those committees as well, because they work with some of the same issues as planning does on that. So we'll be doing that. Our second one, and I know I forwarded it out to the board, but great news from Leahy on the Level One Trauma Center. I don't know all the intricacies on the difference between the levels, but I get the impression that this is a very big deal for us as a community to have that within town, and so kudos to Leahy for putting in all the effort to take themselves to that level, so that they can handle even more serious cases in their emergency room. So we're very thankful, again, to have them in the community, and to have that service so nearby for our residents is just another enhancement for the area. So thank you to, congratulations to Leahy for great achievement there. Last thing I have here, folks, is there's a Battle of the Badges contest to raise, to give blood. The date on that is Wednesday, July 24th, at the Murray Kelly Room, between 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. And my understanding and the way it works is, you go down to donate blood, and you can tell them whether you were sent down by the police department or the fire department. And not to start any trouble, but I understand the police department put a whoopin' on the fire department last year, so hopefully we can get some residents down there to donate some blood. It's all for a great cause, so just wanted to add that into my report. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, I think we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.